Ms. Donna. CMC. Call the town, a new Windsor Town Council meeting for August 2nd, 2017 to order. Would everyone rise and join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our meetings are recorded electronically. We go by an agenda. Anyone wishing to have something placed on the agenda to be discussed by the council should have had it to the town hall the last Wednesday of the month by 3:00. We do also offer the opportunity for anyone here tonight that wants to speak to sign up over here. Approval of the minutes from July 5th, 2017 meeting. They have been emailed out by Donna on two separate occasions. They are in Tab 3. Do I hear a motion for approval?
I'll make the motion that we approve the minutes from the July 5th Town Council meeting.
I second that motion.
We have a motion by Councilman Huffman, seconded by Councilwoman Custon, to approve the minutes from the July 5th, 2017 meeting. Any questions or comments? All those in favor saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So carry. Reports, council committees, Public Works. Councilman Huffman?
The Public Works crews continue to be busy. They've done some work at the Lyons Park, included some infield grading and leveling and setting the bases. They've been fixing potholes around the town, did some curb painting, marked the intersection at High and Short Street with no parking. We changed the color to red now instead of the yellow, trying to make it more visible so people don't park there. They did some work over at the town lot on the corner. They removed the shed and some debris at the old white lot. They're also keeping our equipment in shape. They took our mowers in for some professional service, as well as cleaned some various storm drains in preparation for that heavy rain that we had last week. The Planning Commission also met last month. We had a very busy meeting. We approved a revision to the Sneider Summit layout. As you recall, we did that back in February as well, but now they came back with us with a revised plan that included villas. That provides them the opportunity to have single-family homes, some townhomes for people that are just getting into the town, into the home market, and then villas, people that are downsizing, trying to get out of their single-family home and want to move into something bigger than a townhome. So it changed the capacity only by two up there. Everything else stays exactly the same. They're just moving some lot lines a little bit. So instead of 131 dwellings, there'll be 128. We also approved the new Windsor portion of the Carroll County Water and Sewer Master Plan. And lastly, we also had a swearing-in of the new member, Kevin Kornick, who's also here right now. And so that's my report for this month.
Any questions or comments to Councilman Huffman? And that villa design is pretty much what we have at the Reserve of New Windsor?
That's correct.
Thank you. Water and Sewer, Councilman Pauls Grove is out of town. And Jack, Water and Sewer?
Don't run the direction it's supposed to be.
Very good. Thank you for that update. Greatly appreciate that. Not every town can say that, probably. We'll have other updates from Town Manager Schaefer. Public Safety, Councilman Smith, he is also working tonight on a special case over at Ashwa, so he's unable to be here. However, I know what he would be saying, and so I'll say it in his place. National Night Out was a huge success. Master Deputy Simmons, want to thank you for stepping up and doing outstanding job. I know you had some assistance from Corporal Towson here to kind of tell you how we had done things in the past, but you did an outstanding job, and hopefully you talk a little bit about that in your report. But I want to personally thank the Fire Department, Chief Coe, thank you for your assistance, the Lyons Club, agencies and organizations here in town and throughout the county that helped make it a very successful night, and also to the council and staff that were there last night to help make it a very successful night. So any members of the council want to speak about National Night Out? It was a great success, I think.
Definitely was a great success. Lots of people there chopping up the car with the jaws of life was really very cool. And I think everybody had a good time and had a chance to meet each other and talk to each other and talk to Dan Simmons, which is really important in a town like this, to gain the rapport that everybody had with Mark before, I think is a very important thing to do. So thank you.
Thank you. Economic Development, Councilwoman Schultz?
Okay, so the Carroll County Downtown's Economic Development Group did meet this month, or last month, actually, July, and Carroll County Tourism is giving each town $500 to use for economic development purposes, to promote an event. So I'm thinking probably something to do with Music on the Main, so we can talk about that at that meeting. We did update all the New Windsor business information on their website, so that's all up to date. And I also, on another note, passed on the circuit, to our Circuit Rider, Mike, the Main Street affiliate application and information about applying for grants through the Rural Maryland Grant Program. So he and I talked about that at the picnic, so I think he's going to be working on that. So that's all.
All right. Thank you. Any questions or comments for Councilwoman Schultz? Community Enhancement, Councilwoman Custon?
Thank you. I was going to talk about the National Night Out to start with, but I won't repeat it. It was really cool. Music on the Main, which is the first Saturday in October, is still being planned and would still love additional people to get involved. There's a poster contest for everybody who's an artist or wannabe artist, $100 prize. I think that the deadline for applying is coming up, the 15th of August, and it would be a really nice opportunity for you to get your work seen and appreciated all over town. So please enter. There are citizens who have expressed an interest in setting up a farmer's market at New Windsor Middle School until the middle school is being used for some other official purpose. I suggested that people come and talk about that. I don't know if anybody here is here for that purpose, but if there is interest, perhaps you could communicate with us or other people, and we can see if that's even possible. New Windsor Heritage, which is the historical society in town, is planning a big and wonderful event on November 11th, at which it's going to be New Windsor honors its own veterans through the ages, and there are veterans representing every single war that this country has had, beginning with the Revolution, that have made New Windsor their home. And so it's going to be a pretty cool event. And again, anybody who would like to participate or have stories about particular veterans or particular veterans they would like to see honored, please let the New Windsor Heritage know.
What's the date on that again?
November 11th, 11/11 Veterans Day.
Do you have a time for that yet?
I don't know what time. I think they usually start around 6:00 with the social time and then go to dinner and entertainment and music. And the honors, this year it will be a little different than in years past because it will be honoring the veterans specifically, and there will be music and a cash bar and things like that. So it will be a very fun event, I think. I've been reappointed to the Legislative Committee of the Maryland Municipal League, and will try and keep everybody posted during the legislative session regarding what is being proposed, what bills are being proposed, what actually gets passed. A big thing, again, this year is trying to get the legislature to pass or to get us highway user revenues that used to be delivered to municipalities that stopped, to get our fair share of the highway user revenue, which can be a fairly substantial amount, which would benefit our municipality quite a bit. So I'll keep everybody posted, and that's all I have.
Highway user funds haven't been stopped, but they were decreased. We used to get about $90,000.
Well, they haven't been stopped, but it used to be a mandatory amount. Now it's at the whim of the governor, which is sometimes good and sometimes not. So I think that the goal of the MML is to get it back to where it was, where there is a fully funded and a dependable amount every year.
Yep. And to tag along on Music on the Main, we now have business cards, Musical on the Main, first Saturday of October, 1:00 to 7:00 p.m., Main Street, New Windsor, Maryland, live music and entertainment, beer and wine garden, food, vendors, arts and crafts, games and children's activities. More info, reserve a free vendor space, 410-635-6575, or info@new windsor md.org. So we have a lot of these down at Town Hall, so if you're going to a wine festival, any kind of craft show or anything, and you think that they would be an addition, a nice addition to Musical on the Main, take one, hand it to them, and let them make a phone call to Kalina and make our Musical on the Main even that much better than what we did last year. So thank you for everybody's input on business cards. Any questions or comments for Councilwoman Custon? Mayor's Report, Tab 5. Another busy month. Frank and Mike and I met with Grace Fielder back on July 12th, and then that was on the Sulphur Springs Park renovations, and then we also discussed that at the town work session. At an event down in Chrisfield on July 19th, I talked to Ian Fleming, who I've talked to a couple of times. He's the owner of Washington Inn and Tavern in Princess Anne, and also the Robert Morrison, and he would like for me to come down and talk to him about the pros and cons, all the good things and bad things that he went through renovating the historic Washington Inn. Well, this past month, I agreed to speak at David Rapids. Hopefully, everybody remembers him. He was the eighth grader that shadowed us and then also worked in Town Hall as an intern for two weeks. And he's taking this project on, it's called Project Rebirth Remembrance Ceremony, for the victims of the 9/11 attack. It'll be held right in this building, this room, on Sunday, September 10th at 7:00 p.m. So I agreed to do a few words, and he's also trying to get a veteran or two to speak. So come out and support him, this young man does a lot of work. I guess he's in ninth, no, he's still in eighth grade, I guess, still in eighth grade. So he's doing quite a lot for an eighth grader. And I submitted Preservation Maryland's Six to Fix Application for Dealm and Inn, and we used to be in that, we were in 2013, I think, was Endangered Maryland list. This has kind of taken the place of that program, and they pick out six properties in the state of Maryland to help promote and try to get investors and interest in renovations of historic buildings. So hopefully find out something about that very soon. Any questions on my report? Community Deputy? Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Merrick, good evening. Town Council, good evening. Citizens, thank you for coming out. I guess I'll just start first with the calls for service for last month before I talk about National Night Out. So I pass them out to you. So what you have in front of you are all the calls for service from the month of July. You can see we had 74 total calls for service. And if you flip to Page 2, the blue line there is the end of Page 1. So everything below the blue line are the additional calls on Page 2. We had 19 vehicle stops, and I'll just briefly touch on some of the more significant incidents that happened in town. On July 3rd, in the 100 block of Main Street, there was a theft of construction equipment. That case has been suspended at this time due to lack of investigative leads. On July 6th, in the 1200 block of Tibbetts Lane, there was a theft of a dirt bike. That case has also been suspended. However, it appears that deputy recovered a glove that may or may not have belonged to the suspect, and it looks like that's been submitted for DNA analysis, but that case has been suspended as well pending those results from the lab. 300 block of Lambert Avenue on July 6th, a child ingested some of her grandmother's medication. She was transported to Johns Hopkins for precautionary reasons. Case is closed. On July 14th, at the intersection of Church Street and Main Street down by the railroad tracks, a citizen called in to report some hypodermic needles down near the railroad tracks. Our deputies responded, collected those for destruction. On July 19th, in the 200 block of High Street, I responded for a call involving some possible threats against members of the council here. That case has been investigated and closed at this time, lack of prosecution after consultation with the state's attorney's office. July 25th, at 7:11, I made a traffic stop on a juvenile female who was speeding. Her license was suspended and confiscated, returned to the NBA. She was charged accordingly through the Department of Juvenile Services. And on July 29th, we had an assault in the 100 block of Main Street. That case is still open for investigation. And that's it. That concludes the calls for service, significant calls for service for the month of July. As for National Night Out, Mr. Merrick and some of the town council members already touched on it. I thought it was a pretty good success. I want to thank Chief Coe from the Fire Department. Your guys absolutely rocked it on the car demonstration. That was awesome. I thought the Staff Sergeant from Marine Corps, he was a big hit. All the kids seemed to really be drawn to him, and they liked his table that he had set up, and he had kids doing push-ups and stuff, so I thought that was interesting. Good to see. And then I got to meet with people from, not just the town of New Windsor, but folks came from the surrounding area, which I thought was really nice to see, the support from not just the town, but also outside of the town, so that was good. And then I think the most interesting thing, though, was watching Councilman Smith dance and really embrace his role as a DJ, like he really got into it. So that was pretty funny to see. But other than that, I thought it was great, and thank you for the support.
What happened to the karaoke challenge between you and Chief Coe?
Well, I was...
I think both of you were pretty cocky and pretty brave to take each other on.
I didn't feel like I could live up to Mark Towson, and so I had to politely decline because I knew it would have never worked, so.
Good choice.
Stay tuned for National Night Out 2018.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you, Dan. West Carroll Rec Council, Kevin?
I have a couple of things.
All right.
Good evening, citizens of New Windsor. Here on behalf of the Rec Council, wanted to let you know our meeting, all of our meetings are public and open, and they're held right here. There'll be one, not this coming Monday, but the 14th of August. So that's open to anyone to attend. We all invite you out. And one of the things that we're trying to do, I spoke to the president of the council just on my way here, one of the initiatives that we've been trying to do is that the Rec Council is, right now, mainly geared to kids, and we're focusing on the events that the kids, the children are involved in. But we're looking to do something where we can invite people like our age out to it, you know? And one of the things that they're looking to do is yoga. They tried to do it earlier in the summer this year, so I think it was in June, and it didn't work out, I think, scheduling, there was a conflict with scheduling, and I think they were actually going to try to hold it in this building. But what we'd like to see people do, obviously, we'd like any kind of volunteers that want to come out and help out with the Rec Council, where we'd like to see some adults, citizens come out and take part in yoga, or any other ideas that you have for adult activities for the Rec Council. Because we have a great little town here, and I think it's a good way to have people come out and get involved and see what's kind of going on with the Rec Council and how the things work with the Rec Council, and possibly get involved with it. That's actually how I got involved with it, with my kids in sports, and here I am as a liaison to the Town Council. So that's my little recruiting spiel. I do have a couple of questions in reference to the planning, you know, of the field down at the lagoon, so I don't know if that's an appropriate time to bring that up right now.
Well, I mean, we have it under our business. We'll be discussing it then.
Okay, all right. Other than that, that's it. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you. Fire Chief, Chief Coe?
Good evening, everybody. Unlike June, July was a relatively slow month for the Fire Department. We had a total of 17 calls for the month for fire rescue service, which brought us a year-to-date total of 154. 51 calls for emergency medical services assistance, which brings us to a year-to-date total of 340. In July, we had our first successful crab feed of the season. We had 460 guests at the firehouse, chowing down on a whole lot of crabs. So if you didn't get tickets, don't worry, we have another one September 9th, so get your tickets now. September 9th is our next crab feed, and as well in September, we have our big cash giveaway, which is a total of $10,000 in cash prizes. Tickets for both are available at the firehouse, or you can check out some contact information on our website. Other than that, things continue to go smooth, and I just want to echo everyone's comments on what a great job the town and the sheriff's office did on National Night Out. We were glad to be a participant with the group. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Town Manager, Frank, Tab 6.
Turn to Tab 6, you can follow along with my report. So we continue with the lagoon decommissioning project. If you haven't been down, you really ought to make your way down there. The big lagoon is completely smooth, graded right now, and it's ready to receive the dirt from the stormwater management project. When you see four acres that are graded, that's smooth, it's kind of impressive, and if you saw it in the wintertime, you would never believe it. The small lagoon has a rough finish to it. We're waiting for it to dry out a little bit, and we're going to need to get some dirt in there because it's a little lower than we thought it was, and so we're going to have to get a little bit of dirt in there to make that drain properly. But it's coming along very nicely. The Condon is doing a really fine job for us on that. Okay, the Sulphur Spring Master Plan, I won't talk too much about that. That's on our agenda for later tonight, but the next step is the council needs to provide direction back to Grace Fielder so she can incorporate that into the plan and finish it up. I noticed with a couple of council members not here tonight, we may still have to go another round on that, but basically the ball is in your court to make those final suggestions. The Dealm and Len Paint Abeyment, all the work that was included in the additional work orders has been completed. In the process of doing the chimney repair, the big chimney repair, they did find that there was a hole in the roof up there, and they found one of the windows that was rotted out because of water coming in. So we were able to get all that put into the additional work order, and so as of right now, all the work that's been authorized is completed, and there's still about $93,000 left in the grant, so we may be able to do another component of that project. We just need to move forward with that. The Blue Ridge Stormwater Management retrofit, I have what essentially, I believe, is the final drawings for that project. Talking to the county folks, schedule-wise, it looks like it's going to be going out to bid and possibly be awarded in the September, October timeframe. I think that means that really we're not going to see much activity on that project until next spring. Who knows, timing-wise, if it's a kind of a dry fall and a mild fall, then they might get to do some work, but if it's a wet kind of fall, that'll kind of put that one back till next spring. I was scheduled to give testimony in the hearing on the damage to the Lyons Park equipment on Monday, however, that's been rescheduled to August 14th, and as luck would have it, I'm out of town and the mayor is not available, so it looks like Donna's going to get to be our witness and by testimony. We only really need to testify to the amount of damages and how much we've been compensated and such, so it's fairly straightforward from that aspect, but it's interesting how things work. The sludge press, we had a kickoff meeting on July, Jack and I met with Arrow on July 17th. We talked about three possible placements of the sludge press on the site. Since then, of course, we got the initial version of the Grace Fielder plan, and that was really helpful because it helped, we then could see how the plant and the plan could fit together, and we had the engineer go through a process of kind of evaluating the three different placements, and actually just late today, I got some information back. So we think that we will have a placement, and as you might recall, we talked about using it with the old building. It sort of upset Grace momentarily, and I think we have a placement that really won't, we won't do that. We'll put it in another place where it actually worked better and be a little less costly. So in a way, that process of having the master plan has already benefited us in this other project. Okay, we have two POS projects, actually, we have three that we're working on right now. We're spending the last few dollars that we had on the Lyons Ball Field, and we were able to get some fence topper. If you go down there now, you'll see the fence has got a yellow topper on it. We were able to get new bases and some infield dirt put in there, so the field, I think, now looks as good as it's looked, certainly in the time of it. Pretty good shape. The Atley Ridge POS project, you know, that's where we want to put in the rubberized safety surface, and I had a conversation with DNR, and I'm not going to be able to explain all their thinking, but basically they're saying, if you submit that strictly as a safety surface project, we can approve it for various reasons. But they will do it in cooperation with a replacement of a piece of equipment. So that equipment now is 20 years old. That was put in by a developer, so it's, you know, there's no POS involvement with that equipment, and I'm working with playground specialists, and they're coming up with a plan to incorporate a replacement of some of the equipment with the safety surface. And I will say that we've had inspections of that equipment every year by Legit, and they have expressed concern about those two little spring toys. So those will probably, as part of this, they'll be removed, and something else will take their place, but it won't be a spring toy. The same with the swing set. It shows the age of being over a 20-year piece of equipment, but I think that dollar-wise would probably be right about the same, or maybe a few dollars more. So that was a bit of a curveball, but it looks like it's going to work out. Okay, the 201 Main Street POS project, we have some preliminary money for that, and Grace Fielder, I was asked, I asked her to give us a quick proposal on a little plan for that. I'm going to hand that out to you tonight, so I wish you would take that with you when you go this evening, and we'll talk about this at the next work session. I just wanted to get it in your hands so you could, it's a very familiar format, similar to the other proposals you gave. The POS will not pay for a plan like this. They'll pay for plans for actual, they want to see a hard, kind of hard project. They want to see equipment or something like that. We need to plan how, again, how we want to use that, and this will guide us through that a little bit, because I'm sure there will be lots of ideas. Property complaints, handled a good many property complaints over this last period. There were three properties, 109 Church, 205 Church, and 304 Church that we notify about various issues with growth or weeds and things like that, or water accumulating. 109 Church and 300 Church have essentially been abated. 304 Church, there really wasn't much... 304 Church, there really wasn't much there in the first place, but it's been taken care of. 109, the gentleman is working very hard to get back in compliance. He asked for a little more time. Of course, I'm willing to do that. If he does what he says he's going to do, you know, we'll be good. 205 is, property is maintained by a company that's located in Michigan. Very nice folks when you talk to them over the phone. I sent them some information. That has not been fully abated, so we may be back with them, but it's a, makes it a little more complicated dealing with this long distance. 205 Maple has been inspected and they've been notified, there's been no abatement there. So we may have to go back and if the conditions of that property are such that I don't want to send our guys in there with equipment, it's a very rough property. I don't want to go in there and have our guys damage our equipment. So if we actually go in there, we may have to hire a contractor to do that. And I want to talk with our council a little bit more about entering the property because of the, the condition of the property, so that was not been abated. 410 Church Street has been notified regarding unregistered vehicles and they have a period of time to deal with that. Flip the page, State Highway Progress Meeting. We have, we've been feeding information to the State Highway about our schedule and they've been incorporating, incorporating it into their schedule, but there's, so that's pretty much status quo. Sewer lining will be completed this week. Tomorrow should be the last day of sewer lining. It's really, I know it's kind of inconvenient and, you know, they're supposed to be off the road and they were still working there when I came in, but it's an interesting process. It really has been going fairly well. They lost three days to equipment issues, but a few places where what they call toilets have burped, where, you know, went in the process and water popped out of people's toilets. They've cleaned that up. The one, one household, they actually put the folks up overnight. So, you know, they've been pretty good about, you know, responding to folks. Like I said, they'll be done tomorrow. I thought the, this aspect of the project went pretty, pretty well. The next part of it is to do the manhole repairs and that's going to be, you know, two to three weeks. They'll be doing one or two of those a day and then we work in the street, but it won't be near the disruption and it won't have any effect on property owners like the, like the sewer lining does. Okay, the water line design, GMB is working on those plans and their thirty percent drawings are due by the end of August, so that's, that's making progress. Lighting, the town staff, we've had two, two vendors come in and meet with us and we're going to select one of those guys to come here and do a presentation next work session. And we'll also be giving a presentation on kind of a master schedule that's going to list tasks that the council is going to have to consider and make decisions on. And it's going to be a fairly aggressive schedule. There's, you know, because by this time next year, you know, you're going to be looking at actually bidding the sewer line, I mean, the water line work. So it's got to have, there's a number of things that have to get done. So it's a fairly aggressive schedule. We really need to make a commitment to come to these meetings and make these decisions and get through this process because it's, the only way it's going to get done is to just go after it. So that's what I have. Any questions?
You don't need anything else to do, do you Frank? Pretty busy. Thank you Frank for all you do.
Frank, I wanted to thank you for all this, with all the, dealing with all the property complaints, because I know that was a lot and I'll probably just follow up with you so I can post something on Facebook, because that was where a lot of that stuff started.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to give Kalina all the credit for that. She, every, every Thursday, we put together a new letter and mailed it to the people that hadn't gone through the process yet and we put a new, new schedule up on the website, which I don't know how she does that, but I just know that she does it. And, you know, it took, it took an effort because every week we had to go back and look at the drawings and figure out which, which days were going to be which, which part of the project. And the lane, the lane people who were doing the work, they were very good about providing us stuff timely and, and coming to the office and, and helping us understand what they were doing. So all the credit really goes to her.
We'll pass that on to her, too. I did have one question. Somebody asked me and I actually asked Chief Coe, thinking it was something he could answer, but he said, "You could answer this." I had somebody ask me, "How do we decide when we're flushing the fire hydrants? Do we have a set schedule for that?"
I will say that's something that in my time here, we've, it's kind of been a shortcoming. It really should be done on like a semi-annual basis. We've done it on kind of an ad hoc, when we've had to do an area, we're flushing, but we've, we've, we talk a lot about trying to do a schedule, but it always seems to get bumped by something else.
We can talk about that at the work session.
We don't have a set schedule.
Yeah, okay, good.
I have a question, too Frank. Did you ever hear back from those sidewalk cappers who took a look at the street?
Well, the, the gentleman, the representative of the company, came and we talked a little bit and then I walked him down to Church Street and also Maple. And they asked him, they, they would do a sort of a demonstration where he walks through with his device and he identifies, takes a picture and does a GPS sort of marking of it somehow. And then he was supposed to issue a report that, you know, you have a visual with, you know, this location, there's a two-inch lip and so on and so on and so forth. That, we've done that. I have not gotten the response or the report that he said he would do. So I don't know what the turnaround time is on that. That was probably a week and a, week and a half ago. But yes, so we did, we did meet, he did do his walk around and now I'm waiting to hear from you.
Great, thank you.
Any questions for our town manager? Thank you Frank. There were no signups. There's signups, all right. Treasurer's Report, Donna, Tab Seven.
Trying to move past the numbers? I don't know why, it's such interesting stuff. Good evening, everyone. At the end of July, our balances were as follows. General Fund, one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty-one dollars and sixty-six cents. General Fund Capital Budget, forty-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars and seventy-eight cents. The Enterprise Fund, two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one dollars and ten cents. Enterprise Capital Reserve and Three Rs, five hundred and eighty-six thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars and thirty-three cents. Developer Fees, four hundred and forty-eight thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars and forty-two cents. Money Market, forty-two thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars and six cents. And the Lagoon Remediation at two sixty-four, oh sixty-four, sixty-seven. Any questions on those? Real Property, still have twelve properties for sale and twelve in a foreclosure process. Water Sewer, first light charges will be assessed on eight-four. And just a reminder to everyone that on the October billing, you will see a slight increase because that's when our annual rate increase goes in, well, it went in effect in July, but you don't see it until October. So, and all of that is posted on the website for anybody to pull up the chart. They can take a look at what, what the rates are. I think it's three percent on the usage, if I'm right.
Yeah, it's six dollars on the base charge.
And six dollars on each base charge. And our preliminary audit work is underway. Yippee! Because of the scanning program, though, I think it's going to cut down on the amount of field time this year that they are going to have to spend in the office. So I'm loving it. And also to everyone here, we had, the town provided a cake last night at the National Night Out and we do have some laughs, so please, everybody, after the meeting, go over and eat it up.
Thank you Donna.
You're welcome.
Lehigh Update, I don't see Andy here. Tom, you know, any updates on Lehigh? Been working well with you and Union Bridge?
Absolutely.
Thank you. All right, at this time, I have a couple of recognitions. All right. All right, so that our viewers at home can hear, at this time, I'd like to call on Corporal Mark Towson to come forward. Most of our residents and council members know that Mark had the opportunity to travel on a different path in law enforcement and I think it's a great fit for you, if you understand. You can talk a little bit about that. However, we do not have our own police department, our own officers. However, for thirteen years, we pretty much had a police chief. Due to the fact that Mark, Mark's dedication and love and passion for not only law enforcement, but for law enforcement here in town in New Windsor was just unbelievable. I can really say that our quality of life in New Windsor was better because of your presence here. And anytime that you can do a job and say that you actually made a difference, you're doing, doing what you're supposed to in life. So on behalf of the citizens of New Windsor, the council staff and myself, I'd like to present this to you. Present it to Corporal Mark Towson, Law Enforcement, two thousand and four to two thousand and seventeen, in recognition of thirteen years of outstanding service, Town of New Windsor. A few words?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and thank you, council. Thank you, citizens. I don't know quite how to express myself. Little loss of words. I didn't know if I'd have tears tonight. The new position's been going well. It's in Child Support Division and it's kind of a passion of mine because you, you take these people that don't want to take care of their kids, you track them down and you make them pay and it's been rewarding so far. But I have missed the town, as Neil had said, it's, it's a job that I think it's the best job in the sheriff's office because you have your time to, to help people. You're not just always going to the bad stuff. You, you got time to go to the good stuff and go to Neil's birthday party. You know, you're not going there, not going there because Neil's, you know, going in the pool next door and doing something he's not supposed to, you know? So that's a good thing. And so you get to know people and you get to help them out and you see the results. I mean, many accomplishments here in town that I've seen over the years and been a part of, like the skate park. I remember with, with the old mayor Sam Pierce, how we got that going. The kids were causing problems in town and I got them to come to the meeting. We did a petition at the town council's help and Lehigh's, we got that skate park done. That was a real good success, I thought, one of the many. And just like the town nuisance ordinances, to make quality of life better for the citizens. There's been many things that, that, that have happened during my presence here. And, and the town itself, how it's grown and prospered and the future just looks tremendous. And I, I just can't talk enough about it and I know I'll be back around. I've, I've been through a few times already and been in the shadows helping out with calls. And I just, I feel it's a blessed position. Dan's been doing a heck of a job from what I hear and I'm pleased that he's been doing that. I know he stepped in at a time the sheriff asked him to do it and I don't know what the future's going to hold. I know they are having interviews soon, so it's in the wings, so whether it be Dan or whoever, we're going to have official interviews. Neil's going to be a part in town council, so rest assured and I will be a part, too. So I'll make sure, hopefully we get a good fit also. And I want to thank everyone again and for the future. God bless all. Thank you.
Mark, I would ask you to do one thing for me.
Yes, sir.
Introduce your family.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is my lovely wife Scarlett, my younger daughter Bailey, my other daughter Kelly and her friend Leah. And without them, I guess I should have thanked them also. There's been many a time that, of course, we've had calls after hours and I've been on the phone many hours, off-duty, trying to resolve issues that we've had in town here. So I want to thank them for being at my side and understanding that also.
And I want to thank you for your support for me to be able to do this job.
Yes.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Dan, it just looks like fourteen years to break that record of thirteen years, so then you, then you get a plaque after fourteen years. At this time, I'd like to call on, I'm going to say Bob Dixon. Officially Robert, but.
My family calls me Robert. My friends call me Bob.
Okay. Well, I'll call you Bob, but I got to read Robert. But actually, in nineteen eighty-five, my dad, who was mayor at the time, appointed or recommended the council approve the appointment of, of Bob to the Planning Commission. A lot has happened since nineteen eighty-five in Town of New Windsor. We've seen some growth, but it's been controlled growth because of folks like you and others that have the best interests of the town at heart. Your knowledge has been unbelievable over those years and it's not every day that you get to recognize someone for this amount of years. Again, on behalf of the citizens of New Windsor, the council, myself and staff, present it to Robert Dixon, Planning Commission, nineteen eighty-five, two thousand and seventeen, in recognition of thirty-two years of outstanding service, Town of New Windsor. Would you like to talk about a few of the changes you've seen over the years or something that stands out?
Yes, one of the changes that was, when we came on board, we had no idea what kind of laws, like Article sixty-six B and so forth, or what that even meant. And we didn't have any codes at the time. It was strictly seat of the pants. And we did have some developers that thought that they could pull the wool over our eyes because they could tell we were green. And we didn't have any council. Now we have council when we have a meeting and that is helpful. So yeah, there's been a lot of changes and I'd like to do it all over again.
And you would like to introduce your wife?
Oh, yes. My wife is back here taking evidence. It's my wife Diana and we've been married a little longer than thirty-two years.
And again, I'd also like to thank you for your support, allowing Bob to serve the town in the last thirty, thirty-two years.
He's made quite an impact in the town in his time.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. And that's just two of the reasons, of many reasons, why New Windsor is the town that it is. So again, thank both of you for what you've contributed to the Town of New Windsor. No residence concerns, you said? Old business, Sulphur Spring Park expansion discussion and direction? I'm not so sure if we're going to be able to do direction, but in the past month, we've had a work session that presented three different scenarios. I think the council kind of agreed on taking bits and pieces of all three. A lot of things we liked. I forwarded the presentation, or at least a link of the presentation, to several people in the community that I kind of, I guess, look at as experts in the field or well opinionated that based on a lot of experience, a lot of years in parks and recs, coaching teams, managing fields and so forth and so on. Before I go into a little bit more on, on, on that, council, if you'd like to comment on this before I, I open it up to the public, but I don't know if everybody still has their presentation.
I guess I'll start. As you said at, at the meeting, there was bits and pieces of each one that we looked at. We had a couple of questions that needed to be resolved. Frank, one was the Small Lagoon, if it really had to, to stay in place or if we were able to use that space. And the reason I think that is important is because I was not totally comfortable with the layout of the fields in any one of the designs that Grace provided us. And I thank you for bringing some experts in to maybe help us with that to find the best layout for the fields, but I think that one little piece of property may play into it if it would be available.
Okay.
So.
Good?
I thought Grace did a great job and the, the thing that I liked the best, and for those of you who haven't seen, had a chance to look at it, there, there's a link on our website. So if you, if you want to take a look at Grace's So if you want to take a look at Grace's PowerPoint, it's up there on the website. But one of the things that I'm very proud of, the history of New Windsor, and she did a beautiful job introducing some elements into the design that honor the history of the town. For instance, she recommended that we have a picnic pavilion, and the design that she showed, of course, it's just a draft, but echoed the lines of the train station that we no longer have. So that was really charming. And she had a lovely walking path, and part of it would go over wetlands and provide some views of the area once it's all parkland. So aesthetically, I thought it was really well done. I agree with Dave. There were some things that I'm not quite sure about, because it's just a draft, you know? And I'm not a sports person, so the fields, I'm like, yeah, whatever, you know? You guys decide what you want, I don't care. You know? But I thought that for those of us who like to walk around town, which I do, it will add another really attractive space for us to enjoy in our town.
I think that was like, what, 1.1 miles?
Yeah.
So, you know, it would be an opportunity to have benefit, 5K cancer walks, different things that you wouldn't have to worry about, policing, traffic control, et cetera, et cetera. So I think that would be, you know, another feature that would bring people into town. And that's my vision of this, bringing people into town to not only enjoy this facility, but, you know, during tournament time, in between games, they go, they got to eat, they got to want to shop, you know? And that would help our economic development here in New Windsor. Anything?
Well, you know, I wasn't at the meetings, and I have a hard time visualizing little square plans. I'm just still disappointed, not going to have a swimming pool. But I could read the plans far enough to know that there is no swimming pool. But no, I think it's a good start, you know? Certainly not finished, but a good start.
And as I said, I sent it out to different people, and if you want to speak tonight, that's fine. My one go-to guy, Ron Seidel, he's not able to be here tonight, but his brother is, if he wants to speak. But just to show the interest, Ron and Art grew up in New Windsor, and then also their mom and dad are the ones that built Seidel's fields. So there's a lot of history and a lot of experience in developing ball fields. And Ron, probably three or four years ago, when I first approached the Cal Ripken Senior Foundation, I contacted both Art and Ron, and Ron came up with the designs of ball fields. He had the layout just right with the sun, and the distance and everything. And so I knew I could contact him. And actually, I'll just show you his response. I won't read it, because it's pretty lengthy. I'll probably print it out and have it at our next work session. But at 10:16 on July 24th, I sent Ron an email. At 10:33, he responded. And then at 5:40 PM the same night, he had quite a few comments. And then, again, July 24th, he had comments. And July 25th, he had comments. So, you know, it's great that when I ask the community, and not just because, you know, you don't have to live in New Windsor to be able to make New Windsor a better place in which to live. It was just unbelievable. He's been a coach himself, on a travel team. Some things that he didn't like, just off the top of my head, was having to park a long distance as a coach to get to the fields. You know, it's something we may not be thinking about, just because we have parking. If it's not really appropriate, then we need to address that. If you have a lot of bags of equipment, you know? And then also the location of the bathroom, so that's something we've already addressed. But he had quite a few comments, and also about traffic. That's one thing that we have to take a look at. Whether or not we can come off of 75 and work with the fire department on upgrading, maybe the carnival grounds, blacktopping it for a road, there's all kinds of options, because it's not the best entrance and exit, especially if you're going to have tournaments there and a couple hundred cars. So those kind of things we need to look at. But I talked to most of the people that I sent the emails out to. I wanted to make sure the rec council got the information, so that, you know, they're going to be a big user of these facilities, and be a big component, a big partner with getting tournaments into town, and benefiting not only the town, the rec council, but for future generations as well. And I really think that baseball, we saw an increase in teams this year, and because of some of the reports I've read about head injuries with soccer and football, baseball is apparently on the way back to getting our numbers back up in this area. Well, time will tell, but, you know, if we have state-of-the-art fields, and, you know, there's been some comments that artificial turf fields aren't the way to go, you know, that's an option. We can go with grass, it'd be a lot cheaper. However, I think artificial turf fields will also help in with tournaments. 10 minutes after it rains, you're able to play again. So there's comments. So I'll open it up to the audience. If you feel compelled to speak, we greatly appreciate you coming to the microphone. Go ahead, Tom. Just state your name and address.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, Tom Vickery, 3232 Rattling Bridge Road. I'm actually had quite a few things that, I guess, were questions. You addressed a couple, quite honestly. And it's probably would be, I wouldn't say a waste of my time, but we could probably talk for two hours about some of the questions I have, to be honest with you. I can tell you, as president of FSK's Athletic Boosters, as their head softball coach, and as a softball coach for 20-plus years, to have a facility like this in the area is a godsend. One thing that FSK has never really had is a good feeder program, a legitimate feeder program. I know Tonti Town has expanded some in their softball program, but to have something right here like this in our backyard that we could draw from and generate interest, both in baseball and in softball, key is actually going to one aim next year, which is going to be a big help for that program, I think, program-wide, quite honestly. Enrollment is down around 940-some kids, I think. But something like this, honestly, is, as I said, is a godsend. And anything I can do to help, please let me know. Like I said, I'm not going to waste everybody's time with the litany of stuff I have on my iPad back there.
Well, you send it to me. Call me.
Come to the work session.
You know, we had a conversation, probably a half hour, 45 minutes, the other, last week, and, you know, your input is greatly appreciated. As you said...
I think we can stand here and talk for a half hour, just battle back and forth between national artificial turf, to be honest with you. That's what I had to say. But I just wanted to thank you all for your time, and what you guys are going to do for this area if this comes back.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Tom.
Kevin Kornick, 1011 Gallow Road in New Windsor. My questions are basically on behalf of the rec council. One of the concerns, and just questions they have with the funding source, and then you mentioned the rec council in terms of being a primary user, and those weren't your words, but I'm wondering if we would be considered, the rec council would be considered a primary user, and then use of, not use of occupants, use of facilities in terms of who's going to manage that, and in terms of, you know, outside groups wanting to use it, and who's going to manage, you know, the use of facilities on it?
I would right now, and, you know, everything is open for discussion, but my vision has always been to have a full-time employee overseeing it, scheduling, working with the rec council, working with other groups, you know, for tournaments, concession stands, you know? Could the rec council take it over? That might be a discussion, you know? Funding, there's different avenues of funding, not just for the ball fields, because this is for public works, buildings, improvements to the town, which are long overdue. The sludge press, currently, we're spending about $40,000 a year to have our sludge removed from the plant down here and taken to Westminster. With a sludge press, that will be reduced tremendously, and I think in seven to eight years projected, we could see...
10 years.
10 years. 10 years, which still is a fairly short time with a new project like this. So that would kind of, I won't say pay for itself, but pretty much pay for the loan. So I don't see an increase, having to build that. The funding for the public works buildings, which would also house, most likely, the bathrooms that would be used for our public works guys, but also for the public, for the park. Right now, we're currently paying $10,500 for leasing of a building that, you know, that's not going to pay for a whole loan payment, but that would pay for the best part. Cal Ripken Senior Foundation, which I've been working with for the last three or four years, they will actually send a team out to do a capital campaign for us. And generally, they will come up with 50% of the funding. So that is a big, big help. Also, you know, I also wear another hat as president of the Lions Club. I invited Commissioner Weaver to come out to be our keynote speaker last Wednesday, and he said about the New Windsor Middle School was being discussed for a potential sale. And I've already mentioned it to two other council members, and I mentioned it to commissioners, or council members, two other commissioners in the past, and I mentioned it to Commissioner Weaver Wednesday night, that I'd like to see $3.5 million come to Town of New Windsor. So...
Is that the total cost for the, that will cover one of the three options?
What the total cost, we haven't gotten that far yet. But I would say if we were to be that fortunate to receive that from the county, I haven't done that in an official capacity yet, but I've just expressed my desire, my wishes, and, you know, that I would think would pay for a tremendous amount.
Hopefully with minimal impact on town taxes.
That's my hope. And, you know, all these ideas don't have to be built all at the same time.
Sure.
You know, if we can only build one artificial turf field, and, you know, put the other one in grass, and then have tournaments, and hopefully, you know, find revenue from that resource, then maybe we put a second field in, or we build some other features.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. So on the agenda for the 21st, I think? Yes.
Okay.
21st? And if you want to come, and if it's going to be a long meeting, it'll be a long meeting.
It's going to be a long meeting, sir.
It's going to be a long meeting anyway, but, you know, we need to get some direction, and hopefully everybody can make it, and we can discuss it, and look over the plans. I think I told Kalina to put the link on the website, but if not, it will be on there. So if you want to take it, or take a look at it...
The presentation is on the website.
It's on the website, new windsormd.gov. So take a look at it, get familiar with it. If you have some other ideas, bring them to the work session right here at 7 o'clock, 1/21st. Thank you. Thank you, guys, for helping out. Old business, sulfur, some of you got that. Any other old business? I'm sorry. Any other old business? New business, New Windsor Heights Public Works Agreement Amendment. And that's tab nine.
This is, this is developer requests to revise the takedown schedule that was included in the original public works agreement. And just a little background, so we have a public works agreement, and the project is variously known as New Windsor Vista's, or New Windsor Heights, and now I think it's called Reserve, but the agreement is titled New Windsor Vista's. And it set forth a schedule in there of how quickly the developer had to take down lots or pay the fees on lots in order to preserve that capacity in the wastewater treatment plant, and the water capacity. Well, they haven't kept up with that schedule. So they submitted, the developer submitted a revised schedule that he would like to have amended into the public works agreement in place of the schedule that's in place. And I should add that Paul Mason, sitting back here in the back, who is a huge developer, is here and seating for any questions of him. Now, the schedule envisions that they would take down 12 lots, or 12 units per year through the year 2021, and with four units in 2022. And if you do the math, that's 64. It turns out that actually, in the interim, this project is progressing just a little bit faster. As of right now, there were originally 77 units. 29 have been, have applied for, and either have been issued or will be issued momentarily, building permits, which leaves 48 to be further developed. So they're actually progressing a little faster than the proposed revised schedule. The PWA has language in it, and I've included that page, that says the developer can proceed more quickly than the specified schedule. So there's really not an issue there. But I just want to point out that if you start doing the numbers, you're going to say, well, wait a minute, it's 64, and they have 48 left, how is that? They've actually proceeded a little more quickly than the 2017 proposal, but you don't know that that's going to continue. So this was shared with the planning commission, and I don't know that they actually did any discussion on it, but it's, you know, it's a matter for the council. But I did want the planning commission to have the opportunity to be aware of it. So at this point, my recommendation would be that you accept the revised phasing schedule, subject to doing amendment to attach it to the public works agreement that you already have.
Comments, questions?
Frank, if the schedule would continue to increase, say, for the next two or three years, is there any negative impact?
No. I mean, it's basically, it's, this is the opportunity for this developer to reserve capacity and make sure it doesn't get passed on to some other developer. So if he's staying within the schedule, he's protected in that regard. So if they go faster, the benefit to the town is we recruit those fees a little more quickly, and have that liquidity for projects that the town's going to be.
Basically, they're pushing it out four years from the original.
Yeah. And we know the only other project that's on the horizon is the Snyder's Sonic Project, and that thing has been approved for 10 years, and it's in version 4.0 right now. So even if they were to go like crazy from where they are right now, it would be a minimum of 18 months to 24 months till they were ready to pull a permit by the time they got plans reapproved, PWA, go to construction, that sort of thing. So the relationship between this project and any other development is the same as things it always was, and that agreement that was done in 2013 has language in it that really completes what would happen if the developer didn't go ahead, Snyder's Sonic would go ahead. That's already, that language is already in there and completes that. We hashed that out quite a bit, as you may recall. I see this, you know, is really trying to kind of put this into order with where things are right now.
You hear a motion?
Well, I'll make the motion that we approve the New Windsor Heights Public Works Agreement Amendment.
Go ahead, here a second. We have a motion by Councilman Huffman to approve the revised phasing schedule for New Windsor Vista, formerly New Windsor Heights, amended phasing schedule, taken by Councilwoman Schultz. Any questions or comments? All those in favor saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So carry. Thank you, Frank.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other new business? Announcements? The most important one probably is, we have cake in the back. Please don't make Donna take it home. Also... Also, August 15th is the Musical on the Main poster contest deadline. Please submit that or tell your friends that are artistic. The more the merrier. November 11th, New Windsor Heritage Committee is recognizing veterans. We'll have that on, I'm sure, on our Facebook page when we know more information about that. September 9th is New Windsor Fire Department crab feed, and September 23rd is their big money drawing. Musical on the Main meeting, planning meeting will be next Thursday, the 10th, and then September, because we have a Maryland Municipal League dinner. We will be meeting on the 21st, September 21st, right there. So we will be wrapping things up on the 21st for a big night and a big day on October 7th. Any other announcements? Oh, also, September 10th is David Rapids' event here, right here in this building to recognize or memorize the, those that lost their lives on 9/11. So please come out and support David. He's a great young man. We hear a lot of negative things about our young adults, and he really, for our eighth grader, really, I mean, doing a great job, and you're gonna hear a lot more about him down the road. So come out and say that you knew him when he was, so. Any other? Anything from the public? Again, Bob, Mark, thank you for making New Windsor what it is. Appreciate it. Thank you. Do I hear a motion for a German?
I still move.
Second.
Second, we have a motion and second for a German. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.